Congratulations to the flag of United States of America. To the people with which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, any motion on the work session minutes for July the 5th? I ain't got CC, y'all get it.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
It's gonna be five with five and six abstaining and two absent.
Okay. Yeah, motion on the regular working session, regular council minimum minutes for the 5th?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
In unanimous.
Okay. Okay. Chip, you got a message for us this afternoon? Mr. Hill, excuse us here.
That's all right. First names are all right, Mr. President. Thank you. And thank y'all for time tonight, your attention. I'd like to thank Betty B. Villar. Our CFO is gonna help us out with some of the financial information. As we said during the work session today, a number of our properties in and around the downtown area are owned by folks who live in some other states. And the mayor is presently meeting with some of those people out of state today about some of these key buildings around here and some of the things that we're trying to do as part of our downtown development. Before I bring up Betty and let her talk about the financial things, I thought I'd go ahead and do the community hero program. Will that fit the agenda, Mr. President?
Fine.
And tonight, we have two community heroes to celebrate, including our own, one of our own employees, Lois Cortel. Lois is a member of our economic development team and has made an invaluable contribution to us, and she does so much not only here but in her community. Here in Montgomery, it's truly in her heart. And joining her tonight, we're also celebrating Kimball Forrester. And I'd like to ask Paige Windsor, executive editor of Montgomery Advertiser, to share more about our community heroes.
Thank you so much. I just want to see if our representatives from South University are here tonight? No? We'll go on anyhow. So I want to start with Kimball Forrester. Where is Kimball?
Over there.
You want to come on up? I think it might take you a moment, which is good. I have just a thing to say. Kimball spent 27 years as executive director of Alabama Rise. That's a statewide organization. They're headquartered here in Montgomery. They bring together faith-based groups, along with community civic and nonprofit groups. They come together to help those who are low income. The largest extent of the work is done in the Alabama Legislature through education and working with people who can sometimes be overlooked. Mr. Forrester retired from Rise in 2018, but he's credited with building Rise into what it is today, an effective advocacy organization. He was the first full-time staff person, and his impact is felt to this day. Sir, for the community advocacy work that gave a voice to everyday Alabamians in the halls of power, you're our Montgomery Advertiser, South University Community Hero for March.
All right. Let me just call. Mike, I understand the TV feed's not working. You had a way to check on that? Television feed?
And one final thing, Mr. President, before our financial information. The 23rd of this month will be a celebration of the Montgomery Curb Market, which has been an institution in this community for many years, and we have a proclamation saying that at the conclusion of that, reading this. Anyone here representing the curb market, we'd love to have you have a photo made with members of the council. The Montgomery Curb Market has been at the heart of Alabama's capital city since 1927 and is celebrating its 95th year in existence. And whereas the Montgomery Curb Market is one of the oldest continuous farmers markets in the United States, and whereas the Montgomery Curb Market was first established by the Junior Chamber of Commerce in cooperation with the Auburn University Extension Service, and whereas the Montgomery Curb Market is home to more than 30 vendors and farmers and has been at its current Madison Avenue location since 1947, serving the community year-round, and whereas the Montgomery Curb Market provides an outlet for Montgomery families as well as opportunities for local farmers to interact with members of the community, and whereas the Montgomery Curb Market provides a gateway to health by increasing access to fresh foods and produce in our community, along with meeting the need for a variety of affordable, convenient, and healthy products. And whereas the Montgomery Curb Market is a direct pipeline for farm products, including seasonal fruits and vegetables, jams, honey pickles, canned vegetables, stews, and soups. And whereas the Montgomery Curb Market provides customers with homemade soaps and lotions, fresh herbs, European breads, home-baked sweets and treats, as well as a variety of teas, and whereas money spent at the Montgomery Curb Market keeps dollars circulating here in our local community for the benefit of all our residents. Now therefore, I, Stephen L. Reed, Mayor of the City of Montgomery, Alabama, do hereby proclaim July 23rd, 2022, as Montgomery Curb Market Day, and encourage all citizens to celebrate and support our local curb market throughout the year. So, a round of applause for the Montgomery Curb Market.
Hey there, okay. You got a picture? Thank y'all. Thank y'all for being here. Okay. Betty, you got some information for us?
I certainly do. Thank you, Council. As you all know, the first council meeting in the month, we did not have any financial data for you on our four revenue sources that we, the mayor usually presents to you all on the big screen. So I'm going to be doing that today. We did not have that information because the first council meeting was preceded by a holiday, so we did not have time to get all our data together. Mike, if you would, could you go ahead and put up the first slide for me, please? Sales and use tax revenue trended down to its lowest level since January, end of month of June. Due to the significant increases year-over-year, the downward trend in the latter months of the current year are expected because of high percentage increases that we had in the previous year, the last six months. Collections for June were still positive, and as you can see, our sales and use tax revenues are up more than 6% year-over-year, exactly 6.31. Next slide, please. Lodging tax revenue continues to reflect significant growth in the city. As seen on the screen, lodging tax revenue declined nearly 11 percentage points from the previous month, which was May. Although the growth rate for June did decline, the growth was still significant and was more than 16% over June of 2021. Year-over-year, lodging tax revenue has a positive growth rate of slightly more than 4%. Next slide, please. Alcoholic beverage tax revenue increased significantly in June from the previous month by moving more than 10 percentage points to a positive growth rate. This revenue source grew slightly more than 1% compared to the previous year. Overall, year-over-year, the alcoholic beverage tax revenue continues to trend downward with a negative growth rate of about 2%. This revenue source constitutes a minimal percentage of the city's total general fund budget, so it doesn't adversely affect the budget in a big way at all. And now for the final slide, which is an income statement that has been produced to show you what the projection of total revenues and total expenditures at September 30th of this year should be like. Based on revenue collections through June, it is projected that revenue in totality will be approximately 2% more or nearly $6 million over budgeted revenue. Expenditures are expected to be slightly above the break-even point or about $210,000 more than what was budgeted for the current fiscal year. After a reduction, as you can see on the screen, of about $1 million that would cover any deficits we may incur in the Internal Service Fund, I am anticipating that the city's reserves will increase by adding this excess revenue to our fund balance for the fiscal year of 2021, which would hopefully get us closer to that 20% mark of the general fund budget that we want to be at in our reserves. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Betty, for the good numbers. Okay. Well, you've got some people here to talk to us about what they do, and Greg Clark, you here with the Central Alabama?
Good evening.
Good evening, Greg.
My name is Greg Clark. I'm the executive director of the Central Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission located here at Montgomery, Alabama. We serve the Tauga, Elmore, Montgomery Counties and all the governments within that region who are a member of government. All the governments within our region are currently member governments with the exception of the City of Montgomery. City of Montgomery pulled away from the commission back in the early 2000s, and unfortunately, they are not an active member of our board. But our main duties and responsibilities, we are one of 12 regional planning councils across the state. We provide to our member governments long-range planning, planning work, community development work, as well as economic development, and we also are involved in the weatherization program for the state, which is called the, is really an energy efficiency program to assess, to assist people, low and moderate income families. One, with that program, we actually go beyond our boundary. We cover a nine-county region under our weatherization program. Economic development, we are also identified by the U.S. Department of Commerce under EDA, Economic Development Administration, as the Economic Development District. Our responsibility as the Economic Development District is to report back fairly, to do a comprehensive economic analysis of our three-county region, back to the federal government every four years. We also, as a regional council, serve as a local development district under Appalachia, one of our counties. Elmore is an Appalachia county, so we provide that work for them. As you may have heard, Montgomery County is going to be designated under the Southeast Crescent Regional Council as a, as a area of interest, so they'll be operating soon, hopefully, in Montgomery and Ataga County, sort of like an Appalachia program, so that brings potential other dollars into the county in our region. Our members and member governments basically pay dues for membership. They make up the board. We are creatures of the state. We were created in 1971. Montgomery City was actually the first member government back in 1971. The members, basically, we are, like I said, we are creatures of the state, but we are not state employees. We work directly for each of our member governments to buy, provide them with assistance. The main assistance that we do provide to them is really in grant writing and grant administration through the more competitive funds that are out there. Montgomery, as you know, is an entitlement community. The other governments within our region are non-entitlements, so they have to participate in the more competitive programs to get assistance. Currently out within our region, we are in the process of building several senior centers, as well as providing some economic development activities and building some multimillion-dollar resource facilities in two of our counties. I can go on a little bit more about in detail of what we do. We do do some of our activities, actually does touch the citizens of the City of Montgomery through our weatherization program, because bulk of the population is here in Montgomery. We have worked with the city in several other capacities. We were on the Eurovisory Board for your comprehensive plan, and we also have been working with the Montgomery Housing Authority in Sinsenial Hill project area.
It's been an ongoing, we've had, we support them because of things that go across the city and the county and whatever, so it's been a big deal. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark, do you have a card or some kind of information?
Yes, ma'am. I have some information that I would like to leave, so you guys can basically look at it, and let me give you my card.
Please. Thank you so much.
Who do I need to leave the information with?
Just give it to me. Clark can take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Anna, from the Chamber of Commerce, Anna Buckle.
She brought the team.
Yeah, yeah, I know it. We weren't gonna bite you.
Never travel alone, right?
You got the program with you, Eddie.
I want to thank the council for this opportunity this evening. First of all, I'm Anna Buckle, president of the chamber. I want to introduce members of our executive board, our officers who represent our stakeholder board of directors, which is a partnership that represents, just like this body and this body, business and elected leaders working for the community. Cedric Campbell, our current chairman, Stacia Robinson with Benetoyce Companies, one of our vice chairmen, and Robert Birmingham, Regions Bank, also one of our vice chairmen. So, Mike, if you'll go to the first slide. What I thought I'd do tonight, many of you are very involved in many of the different projects and happy to go into as much detail as you'd like, but I know you have a very tight agenda, so I thought I'd just refocus. What is the chamber working on right now? What are the priorities and where is some of this work? And where are some of the recent dividends that are returning on that investment and the confidence you place in our organization? The chamber is made up of 1,600 businesses and organizations representing about 100,000 employees in this region, and we're all about accelerating growth and opportunity for a better Montgomery for all, and we do that in partnership with you. We focus around these key areas, and these are very strategic, every effort building on each other effort and connecting to each other. Of course, our core industrial, corporate, and existing business and expansion. You've seen the recent announcements already this year, 12 projects that have been worked and announced, $350 million in investment announced, about another 350 confirmed but not announced, so you'll be hearing about that very soon. Your support makes that possible. A logistic strategy built around the inland port. The inland port was a $65 million project we worked on and got that last year through also your partnership. That will drive a renewal of the I-65 corridor and the building of a, of a port that will, I think people think it's a water port. It is an intermodal cargo transfer facility, but it will fuel development for many years to come in this community. Think about American Express, I mean, Amazon, think about FedEx, all the logistics companies you're starting to see pop up along Highway 31. Military and DOD mission. You know, we spend a lot of time on that mission. That is a key sector of economic development, and we work on it every day. Tech MGM and innovation, many of you have been involved in our tech program. That's an innovation strategy and tech strategy built around initially our DOD assets, but it also feeds an entrepreneurship strategy. You've seen that entrepreneurship work at the Lab on Dexter. That has been a wonderful initiative that we've been able to stand up with your support. Experience Montgomery, we've got some members of our team here today, Ron Simmons, Ashley Jurgan, who lead that effort. Huge work in tourism, the stand-up of our visitor center was a big initiative this year. Talent recruitment and retention, very important that we not only keep our talent, but we recruit talent to fill these jobs that we're creating. And then changing our quality of place, and we're focused on a prioritized look at the I-65 corridor by restoring the core of our city and restoring that infrastructure. Mike? So the Lab on Dexter, just many of you have seen that initiative. That is the hub now of our entrepreneurship and innovation space. The companies coming out of our tech accelerator are landing there, but also we have cohorts of training going on for smaller minority businesses that are coming through the Lab on Dexter. So that really has replaced the incubation that we were doing at Court Street. This space is much more conducive to the way people want to work and co-work and innovate today. Mike? And just a reminder, there again, the Lab on Dexter, that just shows you the cool space that we have that's really facilitating development of community and the Montgomery experience. Mike, you can go to the next one. And the visitor center, we talked about the visitor center, your support has made that possible. We just, Ron's gonna be angry because I didn't show you the new graphics, but they're literally in the process of rewrapping this with graphics to make it a lot more interesting, keep it different. We're putting some new displays and, and displays and technology in there, activating the visitor center, and that is feeding these tourists. Our lodging tax, as you see, tremendous growth in the lodgings tax. What we do every day to sell this city, to bring groups and business and promote leisure and individual travel, is driving that lodgings tax growth, and that's a return on your investment. Mike, I think that's my last one. Just thought I'd turn it over to our chairman to give you a few words to close out, and if you have any questions, happy to take those also.
Sure. Counsel, as Anna mentioned, we are so grateful to be here this evening. The partnership of the city, the county, and the chamber has enhanced the quality of life for the citizens and guests of the River Region, and we look forward to continuing that work for years to come. Thank you.
Thank y'all. Any questions, counsel? Thank you for being here. Donna Marietta with the MCOA.
Good evening, members of the city council and others in the room. I'm Donna Marietta. I'm the CEO of MCOA, which is the Montgomery Area Council on Aging. And with me is Pam Goodwin, who is the Director of Senior Services, as well as our incoming Chair of our Board of Directors, Roy McAlley. This year, MCOA is celebrating our 50th anniversary of serving seniors in our community. We began this program in 1972, and over the years, our programs have expanded as well as the number of clients that we serve have increased. This was accomplished because of the tremendous support of the thousands of dedicated volunteers in our community, the compassionate donors, as well as the hundreds of organizations who's helped us through the years. During COVID, this is another thing we're very proud of. We're proud to say that we never stopped serving our seniors. Our clients were served every day. Our staff came to work, prepared the meals, and we were able to recruit enough volunteers to deliver the meals to homebound seniors in our community. So the funds received from the City of Montgomery are allocated to the MCOA Meals on Wheels program. These funds help us distribute meals in every district in our city. In 2021, we provided 134,956 meals to seniors in Montgomery. As you can see from the annual report for 2021 that we just distributed to you, as well as an interesting sheet that's in that annual report that shows you the distribution of our hot meals, our frozen meals, and the number of people in your district that is on the waiting list. We are in, in requesting an increase in funding because we have seniors on our waiting list that are wanting to be a hot meals or a frozen meals client. Now, these seniors should not have to wait. 25% of our clients on the waiting list are also over the age of 85. Throughout each year, we continually hold fundraising events to raise money, to help reduce the waiting list, and to sustain the cost of the meals for our current clients. You know, when someone's on our waiting list and we call them because there is an opening, we may find that they no longer need our services because they have maybe made other arrangements, or sadly, because they have passed. Another reason we're asking for an increase in the current rate is the rate of inflation at 9.1%. So as you must know, our costs just to do what we do are increasing. Seniors must stay healthy to be able to continue to live in their own homes where they are comfortable and where they want to live, and the Meals on Wheels program helps them do just that. When a volunteer knocks on the door, Meals on Wheels. What we do every day to sell this city, to bring groups and business and promote leisure and individual travel is driving that lodgings tax growth, and that's a return on your investment. Mike, I think that's my last one. Just thought I'd turn it over to our chairman to give you a few words to close out, and if you have any questions, happy to take those also.
Sure. Counsel, as Anna mentioned, we are so grateful to be here this evening. The partnership of the city, the county, and the chamber has enhanced the quality of life for the citizens and guests of the River Region, and we look forward to continuing that work for years to come. Thank you.
Thank y'all. Any questions, counsel? Thank you for being here. Donna Marietta with the MCOA.
Good evening, members of the city council and others in the room. I'm Donna Marietta. I'm the CEO of MCOA, which is the Montgomery area council on aging. And with me is Pam Goodwin, who is the director of senior services, as well as our incoming chair of our board of directors, Roy McAlley. This year, MCOA is celebrating our 50th anniversary of serving seniors in our community. We began this program in 1972, and over the years, our programs have expanded as well as the number of clients that we serve have increased. This was accomplished because of the tremendous support of the thousands of dedicated volunteers in our community, the compassionate donors, as well as the hundreds of organizations who's helped us through the years. During COVID, this is another thing we're very proud of. We're proud to say that we never stopped serving our seniors. Our clients were served every day. Our staff came to work, prepared the meals, and we were able to recruit enough volunteers to deliver the meals to homebound seniors in our community. So the funds received from the city of Montgomery are allocated to the MCOA Meals on Wheels program. These funds help us distribute meals in every district in our city. In 2021, we provided 134,956 meals to seniors in Montgomery, as you can see from the annual report for 2021 that we just distributed to you, as well as an interesting sheet that's in that annual report that shows you the distribution of our hot meals, our frozen meals, and the number of people in your district that is on the waiting list. We are in requesting an increase in funding because we have seniors on our waiting list that are wanting to be a hot meals or a frozen meals client. Now, these seniors should not have to wait. 25% of our clients on the waiting list are also over the age of 85. Throughout each year, we continually hold fundraising events to raise money, to help reduce the waiting list, and to sustain the cost of the meals for our current clients. You know, when someone's on our waiting list and we call them because there is an opening, we may find that they no longer need our services because they have maybe made other arrangements, or sadly, because they have passed. Another reason we're asking for an increase in the current rate is the rate of inflation at 9.1%. So as you must know, our costs just to do what we do are increasing. Seniors must stay healthy to be able to continue to live in their own homes where they are comfortable and where they want to live, and the Meals on Wheels program helps them do just that. When a volunteer knocks on the door, Meals on Wheels, they are delivering hot nutritious food, conducting a safety check, and having a friendly visit. So the food, the safety check, and the friendly visit means so much to someone who is homebound and very often isolated. That volunteer may be the only person they see or talk to all day. So with your increased funding, we can add more clients and reduce our waiting list. You will be letting the seniors in our community know that they're not forgotten. Thank you, and are there any questions?
We all understand what a good job you do. Donna, thank you for what you do. Thank you. Great. Tony Garrett. Hey, Tony.
I'm Tony Garrett. I'm the executive director of Central Alabama Crime Stoppers, and with me is our president, our civilian board president, Paul M. Teer of WCOB, and one of our employees, Ray Wagner. We only have two employees, be mindful. I represent Central Alabama Crime Stoppers. This is our home and our birthplace. Central Alabama Crime Stoppers was started in 1997 from the Montgomery Police Department as a result of going to John Wilson and asking him to start a crime stoppers program because we saw a link that was being lessened from the community and law enforcement as far as getting information. So with a little voice mailbox, one telephone, myself as being the only person assigned to the program, we would start receiving calls from the community to help solve crime. Now, going from Montgomery Police Department, we now serve 27 counties, 78 signed MOUs from law enforcement agencies, and all these agencies send us information for unsolved crimes such as fugitives, homicides, missing persons, to assist them with putting it out on the media and collecting evidence from the community. Just for example, we put out four cases for Montgomery Police Department yesterday. We received information on all four cases. One, a person that was wanted as an unsolved crime for breaking into vehicles and using a car to actually saw himself on television and turned himself in. The other three cases are still pending, which may result in hopefully an arrest and a salvation crime. What we have coming up, or I could tell you some of our stats, but I don't really have to, but right now, 3,000 arrests since inception, 8,000 charges filed, 13,000 tips received from inception, $200,000 paid out in rewards. And this is not just a snitching program where you're thinking, okay, only reason that people are telling or giving information about a crime is because they want a reward. We only pay out probably around 40% to 50% of the rewards that are offered on crimes. We have a cold case segment coming up with WSFA where we're gonna show 12 unsolved cold cases, unsolved homicides, which are cold cases from the city of Montgomery, where we're offering $5,000 for any information that leads to an arrest or a salvation. We have a new employee that's starting August 1st. That person would be engineered more towards our social media. We're gonna start going live Facebook once a week, telling people about what we're doing and what crimes that are occurring in Montgomery that are unsolved that we need assistance with. We're gonna start a, we are starting a courtroom testimony training, starting tomorrow, matter of fact, where our first course is being taught for Dallas County investigators down in Dallas County. I think we have around 30 investigators that will be attending where we're teaching them courtroom testimony. Starting, we're starting also a Spanish outreach program where we have a lot of Spanish community, we have a bit large Spanish community in Montgomery, but they have a hard time as far as getting the message from us, so we're actually starting outreach where we're gonna have in Spanish crime stopper segments for our local Spanish radio and social media outlets. We also have a court program called Coalition Against Retail Theft, where anytime there's a theft that occurs at a retail store, we used to put that on WSFA and WAK. It was costing us money, because every time we put out a person that's shoplifting, we would get that person identified within minutes, so we were costing, it was costing us money. So now we meet with the loss prevention managers, and they actually identify the people by saying, okay, we arrested that person last month, and they're just passing that information along. Last month, I think we had 164 arrests, 164 arrests with no involvement from law enforcement, no involvement from any other entity, just within that circle of loss prevention managers. They're just providing information or sharing information. Also, we have an action line that we're gonna do later on, I think you guys are familiar with that, with WSFA, where we're gonna showcase all wanted criminals and unsolved crimes between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM, probably within the next month or two, and hopefully getting some of those people off the street. I know I can keep on going, but I know y'all don't want me to.
We know you're doing a good job.
What I'm gonna invite you guys to do though is come by our office and pretty much witness what we do, how we do it, and we want to get something started with your city council district to see what we can do to see how about making a difference in your city council area. Are there any questions? If there are no questions, thank you.
Do you have a car?
Yes, you might.
That's another retired, military police officer, done a great job.
Do y'all attend homeowners' meetings?
When we are invited. At one time, I used to go probably about eight per week.
Okay, okay, that's good.
So if you need me, all you have to do is ask.
I'll get you involved, thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you, appreciate what you do. Teynite? Family violence program.
Hey, good afternoon. Teynite, executive director with the Family Sunshine Center. Kind of as everyone else has said, I want to just thank you so much for the continued support of our agency over the last 40 years, probably. We started in 1981, serving domestic violence victims. Since that time, we have grown to also serve sexual assault victims and now human trafficking victims. We have four areas that we work with victim survivors in, and that is crisis response and intervention. There are crisis line, which is 24/7/365, answered by a live person. We also provide multiple housing options for survivors who come to the Family Sunshine Center, which includes emergency safe shelter. So when their abuser is chasing them with a gun or a knife, we can get them to a safe place, usually with the help of law enforcement. Past safe shelter, then we have transitional housing. We have apartments that they could live in in addition to a rapid rehousing program that's available. Also counseling, advocacy, and supportive services, including legal, legal help directly for clients. And then probably one of the most important things, outreach and prevention education. So we work within the schools and also within community organizations to provide prevention education, teaching on things like healthy relationships and how to engage in healthy relationships and safe dates and things of that nature. One of probably the most innovative programs that we have going on right now in Montgomery public schools is a trauma-focused behavioral therapy program for children and adolescents who have been traumatized. And that trauma can come from domestic violence, sexual assault, trafficking, community violence, bullying, or traumatic grief. So if we have children who are exhibiting signs of trauma in the classroom, their teacher or guidance counselor or someone can refer them to our agency for services. All services are free of charge, thanks to businesses, grants, local community, city councils, and commissions around our service area. I'm asking for level funding, which is, it's still a big ask for this year. We use typically, the city of Montgomery's allocation is used as match on our federal grant programs, which require anything from a 20% match up to 100% match. So we're able to quadruple the impact with your money by being able to use it as match. All of those funds are allocated to our shelter program so that individuals who are there are receiving all of their basic needs in addition to counseling and advocacy and other supportive services.
Great program. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you. I have some handouts that if you don't mind, I can bring to you.
Be great. Okay. Any special committee reports? I have number one, Madam Turk.
Mr. President, item one, resolution authorizing a project agreement and related documents for the use and grant of public funds and things of value in aid of Hyundai Transit Georgia Seating System LLC and other private entities.
Motion to suspend the rules?
No, we didn't.
Motion to adopt?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item two, review of Sunrise Extended Stay, 5601 Carmichael Road.
Carry this over 90 days.
And number three?
Withdrawal, number three.
Item number four, resolution approving phase two of the Montgomery Thrive Initiative.
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item four, resolution approving phase two of the Montgomery Thrive Initiative.
Need a motion to suspend the rules? On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item six, resolution authorizing mayor to make application to the DOJ for the physical 22 JAG grant.
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item seven, application for restaurant retail liquor license doing business as Brenz Wings at 19 Commerce Street.
Representative Brenz Wings, here please. Yes, sir, come forward.
I did. She's okay with all three of them. She said yes.
Your name for the record, sir?
Andre Brunson.
This is a public hearing, and anyone who wants to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none of that public hearings been held, it's proper to counsel.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules, on the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business. They got one more, have you?
I have four application for retail beer and retail table wine owner off premises doing business as Kahaba House at 31 South Court Street.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Hold on, I gotta have, I gotta have a, this is a public hearing, anyone who wants to speak against this item, please speak up. Seeing none of that public hearings been held, it's proper to counsel.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Have motion to suspend the rules, on the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Let the record reflect the names of the people.
I did. I may have known it was the same people.
Good luck with your businesses. Thank you for being there.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Item 10, resolution appointing Jeff Jones to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Motion to suspend the rule from this?
Motion to suspend the rule on rest of the agenda.
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item 11, pursuant to section 1153b1 Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of unsafe structures at the listed locations.
Need a motion to approve?
Did we ask people?
Number 11.
No, nobody signed up?
No.
Motion to adopt?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item 12, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of evacuation of public nuisances on various lots.
Need a motion to approve?
Did we ask people?
Need a motion to adopt? Nobody signed up for it. Anybody in the house wants to speak on item number 12?
Motion to adopt?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Counsel, I have put before you some contingency funds. The first set, the ones that's before you have been approved by Mayor Reed, is for District Eight, $1,000 to Montgomery Gray Dixie softball, $1,000 to Youth in Action. Mr. Hill, I have the addition of, for District Two, $1,000 to Montgomery Gray softball and $4,500 to AUM Dixie Youth Baseball League. And for District Seven, $1,000 to Montgomery Gray softball league. And these are all vendors. Mr. Hill.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I got one, Charlie. Gray, I guess it's All-Star Team Gray baseball.
Montgomery Gray.
Montgomery Gray, $500.
Wait, is he doing baseball or softball? You doing baseball or softball?
Are you doing the softball?
For baseball.
Is it eight U, eight, they're going to the World Series?
Softball.
Softball, sorry.
Wait, 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 tell me what the name is now, because we've got several.
It's the same one I just did. Yeah, remember how we spoke that Montgomery Gray was softball southeast?
It's Montgomery Gray Dixie softball.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it. Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to add two more, Ms. Brenda.
Okay.
$1,000 to MCOA and $1,000 to Family Sunshine Center.
And $1,000 to?
Yes, ma'am.
Family Sunshine?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Anybody else? A motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item 12, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of evacuation of public nuisances on various lots.
Need a motion to approve?
Did we ask people?
Need a motion to adopt?
Did we ask people?
Nobody signed up for it. Anybody in the house wants to speak on item number 12?
Motion to adopt?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Counsel, I have put before you some contingency funds. The first set, the ones that's before you have been approved by Mayor Reed, is for District Eight, $1,000 to Montgomery Gray Dixie softball, $1,000 to Youth in Action. Mr. Hill, I have the addition of, for District Two, $1,000 to Montgomery Gray softball and $4,500 to AUM Dixie Youth Baseball League. And for District Seven, $1,000 to Montgomery Gray softball league. And these are all vendors. Mr. Hill.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I got one, Charlie. Gray, I guess it's All-Star Team Gray baseball.
Montgomery Gray.
Montgomery Gray, $500.
Wait, is he doing baseball or softball? You doing baseball or softball?
Are you doing the softball?
For baseball.
Is it eight U, eight, they're going to the World Series?
You're the softball.
Softball.
Softball, sorry. Montgomery Gray.
Wait, 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 tell me what the name is now, because we've got several.
It's the same one I just did. Yeah, remember how we spoke that Montgomery Gray was softball southeast?
It's Montgomery Gray Dixie softball.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to add two more, Ms. Brenda.
Okay.
$1,000 to MCOA and $1,000 to Family Sunshine Center.
And $1,000 to?
Yes, ma'am.
Family Sunshine?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Anybody else? A motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
On the favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Okay. Okay. We have a number of people here signed up to speak to us on the.